The Commissioners' Court will, Brazos County will meet in record session on September the 26th, 2023 at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas 70th Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the Indication, Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. and Texas Flag, Commissioner Barrett will lead us.
Please pray with me. Almighty, thank you for this day and thank you for the many abundant blessings you bestow upon us. Thank you for the opportunity to do meaningful work for the citizens of Brazos County that we hope is pleasing to you. We pray for the men and women who protect us from harm's way, our military and first responders, whose work keeps us free. We pray for rain so that our farmers will have good crops. We also pray that our legislators in Washington, D.C. will come to agreement so that the government doesn't shut down. We ask all this in your most precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns, and we've got three that have asked to speak. Kathy Vine.
I had a question about last week's meeting. It was actually my first meeting. I'm in Precinct 4, and I don't really understand how everything works, but here's my two questions. You had three job positions that were changed with the titles, but no budget effect. Why? What was the purpose of that? Is there some future budget effect? And what was my other? Oh, I know. You said there were 113 jobs opened in Brazos County, but there's only 22 on the website. Did they all get filled since last week, or is the 113 inaccurate, or are they listed somewhere else?
So, we can't have dialogue.
Oh, okay.
This is public, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So, it's public input.
Okay.
You're welcome to come up and speak, but we can't have dialogue.
All right, I will learn. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Cynthia Wiley.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Name is Cynthia Wiley. I would like to ask the Court to turn its attention back to the concerns regarding the county's electronic voting machines. Last week, our election administrator spoke at a Women's Republican Luncheon, to which I didn't see any of you attending. Ms. Hancock presented a slideshow of how the machines are tested, set up, and programmed. It was very neat and tidy. The point, up until the Central Counting takes place, appears to be safely managed. After that, that is the concern. Our election administrator said, two days before the cutoff for registration, they get a dump of 50,000 new registrations. I'm going to say it again. Two days before the cutoff for registration, they get a dump of 50,000 new registrations to process. Does anyone on this Court find that disturbing and suspicious? I'm not aware of how the vetting tools get applied to discern fraud. Our election administrator has expressed to me that she is not interested in citizens who want to canvass to help clean up our voter rolls. This Court selected our election administrator, and I am concerned with what I have discovered. I would like this Court to look into what I have shared with you today. And by the way, Senator Romney, his wife, and his son are very heavy investors in the heart machine company that exists in Austin, Texas. Now, that should give rise to concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Kagan Baldry.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name's Kagan Baldry. So, I actually work with the Brazos Valley Council Governments. I would have interacted with a few of you in that capacity before, but as a part of my role with the Cog, I also work with the Brazos Valley Regional Advisory Council. So, that's the board made up of trauma professionals, hospital professionals in the region, just helping facilitate our trauma care system. And with our funding this year, we've decided to bring in, it's a repeat instruction course to the region. Y'all are actually hosting at the Brazos Center, so we thank y'all for making that facility available. We have an active attacker course, though, on October 9th, 10th, and 11th. Okay, so Dr. Mike Klumpner's coming in with threat suppression. It's top-of-the-line training. I know that we had employees of Brazos County come back in May when we brought him in, and we just have been traveling the region to each of the Commissioners' Courts, inviting the Commissioners personally, just to ensure that our elected officials know that the training is available to them. It's free. It's not open to the public. It's for elected officials, emergency management professionals, law enforcement, EMS. You have to have a professional connection to the material due to its sensitivity, but we're excited to bring him back. We really do believe in this instruction, and we'd hope that some of y'all will be able to attend. I've made sure to get the registration link to Ms. Marcia. I can send it to any of you personally, and I've got flyers here, but I was going to leave just in case anyone preferred physical copies. And so, like I said, it's October 9th, 10th, and 11th. On the morning of October 9th, we will have a school attacker-specific training for four hours. That afternoon, there will be a specific attacker training for attackers that use fire as a weapon. On day two, it's probably the one that would be most applicable for you, because it's just a broad scope view of the entire process, joint public safety response in general. So, it's an eight-hour course for that entire day. Any portion of the course you can make, I'm sure will be beneficial. Then the last day will be a four-hour course on attackers at hospital locations. So, like I said, I mean, this gentleman is currently training the Department of Defense in response at their facilities. His curriculum is sole source and second to none, and any of our law enforcement agencies that went the first time, I know, can attest to how good the instruction is. So, we just wanted to bring that to your attention. We've been going around the region, each of the seven counties, just making sure that we spread the word effectively and that y'all know what's coming up. So, appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kagan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is to consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 31. Number three is Proclamation 23-028, designating October 1 through 7, 2023, as National 4H Week in Brazos County.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second. Discussion.
Yeah, just want to say what a great job the 4H does, and thank them for the breakfast this morning.
Yes.
And just a great organization, and we're glad to see so many of our youth involved.
Yeah, it's great, and although I didn't try any of the food, it sure looked good.
Yeah.
I had your share, and it was great.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. So, National 4H Week, Proclamation, whereas the Brazos County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the Texas 4H Development Program for Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 115 years, providing experience-based education to youth throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas the admirable program, which seeks to provide learning experience for all youth through their head or hands and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members to our society. Whereas the program's more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from 8 to 18 come from a diverse ethnic socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 30,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, and energies and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout the proud history of the 4H program has developed positive role models for the countless Texas through its innovative and inspiring programs, and continues to build character and instill values that have made our state strong. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Brazos County Commissioners' Court hereby designates October 1 through 7, 2023, as National 4H Week in Texas, and recommend the 4H Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and many men and women who have made the program a success.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
All right.
Want to speak, and certainly anybody who wants to come up and speak.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners' Court. My name is Matt Pfeifer, Brazos County Extension Agent for Youth and 4H Development. I'm joined here with Ms. Ashley Sugg, as well as Mr. Chad Caperton, fellow Extension Agents. National 4H Week is a way to promote and celebrate 4H across the nation. We've got, we're joined here with our Brazos County Council Officers, who will introduce themselves as well. We will also observe One Day 4H, and we have a community service opportunity planned with Lit Creek Park on this Saturday. It's a way to give back to our community and their support for 4H. Here in Brazos County, last year, we ended the year with about 768 4H members, 162 registered volunteers, and graduating seniors in Brazos County 4H received about $135,000 worth of scholarships. So, it's a very impactful program, and we appreciate the support of Brazos County. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our Brazos County Council Chairman, Mr. Kyler Went. He's going to introduce himself, and our other officers that we have present are going to tell a little bit about themselves and what they do in 4H. So, thank you all for the opportunity.
So, like you said, my name is Kyler Went, and I am the Chairman of the Brazos County Council, and also the President of the Southwood 4H Club. And in 4H, I have shown many different species, heifers, sheep, goats, and rabbits, and participated in many different contests along the way. I'm very grateful for everything that 4H has given me, and also what I can give back to the community with that. So, thank you all for being here.
Hi, my name is McKenna Johnson. I'm the Second Vice President of the Council, and I show pigs, steers, commercial heifers, and commercial steers, and I participate in livestock judging, livestock quiz bowl, and the public speaking contest.
Hi, I'm Cameron Skaggs. I'm the Third Vice President of County Council, also the President of St. Joseph 4H Club. I'm a Texas Youth Livestock Ambassador, and I exhibit steers, heifers, and barrows, as long as participating in livestock judging and livestock quiz bowl. Thank you.
Could I ask that you tell us what school you go to and what grade you're in as well?
I go to Rutter High School, and I'm a freshman.
Great.
I'm Lily Bolin. I am a sophomore at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. I am the Treasurer for the Brazos County 4H Council, and the President of the Equestrian Club. I show horses and compete in horse judging.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Smith, and I'm a sophomore at College Station High School. I do food nutrition project, livestock judge, and I show rabbits and swine. I'm also a Healthy Texas Youth Ambassador.
Hi, my name is Olivia Davis, and I'm a freshman at Rutter High School. I'm reporter here on County Council, and I'm Secretary of the Southwood 4H Club. I participate in 15 competitions within the food and nutrition, fashion interior design, and photography projects, as well as livestock judging, and I'm a Photography Ambassador for the state and HUI Ambassador.
Hi, my name is Zachary Smith. I am a senior at College Station High School. I'm the Parliamentarian, and my projects include sheep, poultry, food nutrition, photography, and archery.
Hi, I'm Sam McGarry. I go to College Station High School. I'm a sophomore there. I'm the historian of the County Council Team, and in 4H, I'm the Vice President of the Robotics Club. I'm also a STEM Ambassador for Texas 4H, and I do ag mech, and I show rabbits.
My name is Cooper Smith. I am a junior. I'm homeschooled. I am the district delegate for County Council, as well as the council delegate for the Archery Club. I'm a state shooting sports ambassador, and I show heifers, swine, rabbits, and poultry. I have been involved in 4H for nine years now, and I've been able to compete in a lot of different projects.
My name is Drew Catlin. I go to Rutter High School, and I'm a freshman. I am Health and Safety Officer on County Council, and I participate in rabbits, food show, education presentations, ag ID, and that's all. Thank you.
All right. 4H is a great organization. To help the future leaders of America, and I'm proud of every one of you. We're going to want to take some pictures. If y'all will line up and come up to the front.
I thought y'all were going to talk about front and ground, man. I think y'all. That club just needs to be set open. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Keep it up. So, how many of y'all started 4H as Clover Kids? Okay. So, we got long-term in there. That's great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Keep up the great work.
Thank you for the reference.
We will move on to number four, a request for approval in Constance Precinct 2 for the acceptance of three ballistic shields in the amount of $16,506 from the 100 Club. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is approval of the release of previously earmarked American Rescue Act funds for the HVAC air purification system totaling 1.5 million. Funds will remain in the General Fund for use for previously identified projects.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is approval of an earmark of $500,000 of revenue replacement funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to be reallocated to the Wixon Creek SUD for the purchase of emergency generators.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Yeah, I'm glad, I just wanted to say I'm glad that, since they applied for that grant, that we have it, and we're able to go ahead and allocate that money to them. Amen.
Yep.
We voted on that, correct? We did. Okay. Number seven is approval of the following job descriptions.
Move approval. 1 through?
83.
83.
Second. Motion made seconded to approve the job descriptions 1 through 83. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval of third red statement of an interlocal agreement with construction, acquisition, implementation, operation, and maintenance of the Brazos Valley Wide Area Communication System and updated BVWAX Managing Entity ILE. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of Brazos County interlocal agreement with emergency medical services between City of Bryan and Brazos County, 2023, '24.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Y'all got that right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval of Brazos County interlocal agreement for emergency medical service between City of College Station and Brazos County, FY 2024 through '26.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is approval of user agreement between Brazos County and Department of Public Safety of Texas for driver's license records, driver's record monitoring service under the Texas Transportation Code 521 and 730.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval requested from Risk Management for payment to Lloyd Wassman in the amount of $184 for water line and plumbing damage. The water line was damaged by the county equipment during road construction.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval requested from Risk Management for payment to the City of College Station in the amount of $265.89 for tire repairs. Tires were damaged by county equipment.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval requested for the Purchasing Department to declare a list of surplus property as salvage in accordance with the Local Government Code 263.152 and authorized destruction or other means of disposal.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of contract renewal, OAG 2022-2344900-319-01, associated with contract 23-167 with Apres Insights LLC participating entity services agreement for the statewide automated victim notification service, Savens. Renewal period is for September 1, 2023, to August 31, 2024.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is approval of Amendment Number 1 to Contract 18-134 Electronic Bidding System with kind of wave technologies to extend current contract date terms September 30, 2028.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is approval of Amendment Number 1 to raise daily rates from $100 to $150 for contract 22-147, short-term detention of juvenile offenders with Coffin County.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is approval of change order to CIP 22-515, Brazos County Security Upgrades with Aguland Construction for $22,668.38 for additional project materials.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is approval of deductive change order to CIP 22-640, Brazos County Bridge Scour with Fuqua Construction for $24,029.55 for unused contingency.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is approval of contract 23-168, short-term detention juvenile offenders with Austin County.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21 is approval of contract 24-026, renewal with legal representation of indigent juveniles with gender on Tibida.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22 is approval of contract 24-034, Web EOC Software Support with ESI Acquisitions, Inc., Juveware.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 23 is request from Sweetwater Subdivision Home Motors Association for approval to reduce the current roadway speed limit on Sweetwater Drive to 30 miles per hour for public health and safety reasons. Copy of the signed petition is attached, site located Precinct 1. Move approval. Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 24 is request permission to enter private property owned by Michael Marino, located at 4980 Shen Road, to install rock riprap at culvert crossing to help prevent erosion, site located Precinct 1. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 25 is request permission from Emmanuel Baptist Church to enter private property to store equipment, replace driveway culvert, and gray ditches for better drainage on Steep Holler Road, site located Precinct 2. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 26 is consider and take action on Wixon Creek SUD Utility Permit to construct a road board for a one-inch water line crossing under Marino Road, located 2,055 feet northwest of Highway 21, site located Precinct 2. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 27 is approval of expenditure journal entry for Brazos County, FY 22, '23, June 2023 through August 2023, cash contribution of $48,471,30 to CSCD Specialty Court Program.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 28 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval, A through E.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 29 is budget amendments. Budget amendments, FY 22/23. Budget amendments, 49.01.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 30 is personnel change status.
Move approval, A, B, and C.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. See, this is moved into my second folder over here. Let me find it. Payment claims. Payment claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8124800 through claim 8124932, and claim number 9008589 through claim number 9008641.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 32 is acknowledgment of the FY 2022, '23 budget to actuarials by fund as of September 30, 2023, and an acknowledgment of FY 22, '23 contingency budget to actuarials by funds as of September 30, 2023. as of September 30, 2023. Number 33 is an acknowledgement of the monthly reports submitted in September of 2023. Number 34 is juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 38 juveniles in detention, 33 males, five females, and 26 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thirty-five sheriff's report on inmate population. Chief.
Hey, good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This morning, we have 511, I'm sorry, 711. I wish it was 511. There's 599 males, and there's 112 females, and we have 57 on electronic monitor.
I was getting excited that we got rid of all the inmates.
Yeah, maybe it's a vision of the future. Hopefully, we'll see them.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thirty-six is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none. Thirty-seven was conference citizens' input and our concerns. We didn't have any others turned in. Next item is to adjourn. Thank y'all.